So I'd like to go to like the downtown summit, and the Keemer Annual Meeting, and a number of social activities that you participate as representatives of the city. So I do appreciate how much time each of you put in. It is probably far more than $10.
I'd like to call the Tiffin City Council meeting to order. This is the second stated meeting for the month of October. The invocation tonight will be given by Councilmember Thacker.
Okay. Members of council, each of us arrives as individuals with unique ideas and experiences, but all with a desire to fulfill the needs of others. I ask these reason, wisdom, and empathy in your decisions today to take into account the implications your decisions will now have and in the future. We should all plant an acorn, even though we may not live, to hear the wind rush through its leaves, or the joyous laughter of children playing in the comfort of its shade. We plant the seed for the benefit of future generations.
This time, I would like to call on Boy Scouts Claude McKenzie and Alfred Greenwald, and please you direct your attention to them for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to thank Boy Scouts McKenzie and Greenwald for attending this evening. They are members of Troop 123 out of Mansfield, Ohio, but these two scouts happen to live in Tiffin. And we're very, very happy to have you with us tonight. They are here as part of the requirement for their citizenship in the Community Merit Badge. And thank you very much, and we'll have more comments for you a little bit later. Clerk Forrest, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Thacker.
Present.
Councilmember Wilkins.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
Present.
Councilmember Leopard.
Here.
Councilmember Perry.
Here.
Councilmember Reisner.
Here.
And Councilmember Spar.
Here.
All seven members of the City Council are present. Each one of you have received the minutes for the October 3 regular and committee of the whole meetings. Is there any additions or corrections to the meeting as printed? Councilman Jones.
I gotta find my circle here. It's very minor, and maybe it's not even worth, well, it's worth bringing up. Somewhere, that rumpy 5%, which agreed to at 4%. Oh, yeah, I got it down. But somewhere in here, it said 5%. And it should be 4%.
It was in his report, and then he, I think below, I added the note that it was supposed to be changed to 4%.
Okay. Thank you, Dan.
There's one other item. Ordinance number 22-92 on the vote, it's 7 to 0, not 7 to 04. I apologize. Correct that in the original.
The minutes stand approved as corrected. Committee reports. Finance. Councilmember Reisner.
No report, Mr. President.
Law and community planning. Councilmember Perry.
No report, Mr. President.
Materials and equipment. Councilmember Jones.
No report at this time, Mr. President.
Personnel and labor relations. Councilman Perry.
No report, Mr. President.
Recreation and public property. Councilmember Wilkins.
No report, Mr. President.
Street sidewalk and sewers. Councilmember Thacker.
Yes, thank you. A street sidewalk sewer committee was held on October 3, 2022, at 6:00 PM in the Tiffin City Call Council chambers. Attending were committee members Cheyenne Thacker, Daniel Perry, Kenneth Jones, Kevin Reisner, and Stephen Leopard, along with city engineer Matt Watson, city law director Brent Howard, Mayor Don Yanantuno, and city administrator Dale Thornton. Thacker called the meeting to order at 6:00 PM. The purpose of this meeting was to discuss the mayor's request to, I'm sorry, the mayor's request for legislation 22-41 regarding an easement from Heidelberg University for a storm sewer installation, and any other business that may come before them. Watson informed the committee that they are working through the design of the CSO 24 and 30 Sewer Project, which is one of our next long-term control mandated sewer projects on Rebecca Street between Rock Creek and Circular Street, proposing to install a storm sewer. The location is on the north side of Rebecca Street, out of the normal 50-foot right-of-way. Heidelberg has agreed to provide the city with a storm sewer easement on their private property. Watson passed out a drawing and legal description for the proposed easement from Heidelberg that he prepared and has been approved by Seneca County Tax Map. The easement would be a permanent right to construct, use, inspect, maintain, repair, and replace a storm water sewer. Leopard moved to approve the mayor's request for legislation 21, 22-41, authorizing the mayor to accept an easement and take all other actions necessary to acquire real property rights from Heidelberg University to construct, use, and maintain a storm water sewer along Rebecca Street. Perry seconded the motion. The motion passed 5 to 0. With no further business, the committee adjourned at 6:09 PM.
Thank you, Councilmember Thacker. Economic development and downtown planning. Councilmember Spar.
No report at this time, Mr. President.
Thank you. Reports to the officers. For honor, Mayor Don Yanantuno.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before we get started this evening, I'd also like to thank Boy Scout Troop 123 for taking the time to come and see us this evening. It's a pleasure to have you here, and very nice job on the Pledge of Allegiance. And so just really happy that you're here. And you gentlemen are from, not in town, you're from Mansfield, correct? So a little bit of a troupe in here, but your members are from Tiffin, and so we appreciate you being here this evening. Also, this evening, I want to thank all of the volunteers who maintain the planters, the landscaping areas throughout downtown, at our parks and city entrances, and for the watering of the hanging baskets. With the cooler weather, our hanging baskets and planters are being removed from downtown Tiffin and being stored until next year. It is through their efforts that we keep this program going year after year. So again, we want to thank all of them. And Nick's got it up on our Facebook page with all the list of all the volunteers, which is over 100 of them. So I didn't want to take the time this evening to name them all and miss someone, but want to make sure they get thanked personally. And also tonight, we are honoring our very own Director of Finance Kathy Kaufman with a special presentation from Lori Brody from the State Auditor's Office. Lori?
Good evening. Thank you for having me this evening, and it is my honor to be here this evening on behalf of State Auditor Keith Faber. And I am here to present the Auditor of State Award to the whole city. And I just have a couple notes I just want to read that I think are important to remember. The State Auditor's Office audits about 5,900 entities every year. They're all different forms of government. Think of it as anybody that spends taxpayer money, they don't get a choice. By law, they have to have an audit, and they don't really get a choice who does it, but the state auditor does it, or we also have some IPAs. But in light of how many we audit, this puts the city of Tiffin in a very select group because only about 8% actually receive this award from the auditor's office of all those audits. And it's given to a local government or school district upon the completion of a financial audit that meet the criteria, you probably hear of a clean audit. And just a quick list of what is required to receive it. You must have financial reports. You must file your financial reports with the auditor within 150 days of fiscal year end. To have a clean audit, you can have no findings for recovery, material citations, material weaknesses, significant deficiencies, single audit findings, or question cost. You also get a management letter, and it can contain no comments related to ethics referrals, question costs less than $10,000, lack of a timely report submission, reconciliation issues, failure to obtain your timely single audit, findings for recovery less than $100, or any public meeting or public records problems. So basically, you can have no financial concerns, and so that's why I think it's really important to go through that list, you know, once a year when you do get the award. But I think it represents the hard work of all the employees that you have in the city because they have to work really hard every day to make sure that happens. I also want to recognize the mayor and all of the council because I think you've done a good job monitoring, you know, taking care of every dollar that you're spending of taxpayer money. But I especially want to recognize your finance director, Kathy, and all the people that help her as well for their outstanding leadership and just their dedication to fiscal integrity. I just think it's a job well done, and on behalf of State Auditor Keith Faber, I do want to present the certificate I brought so that we can put that with the others that Tiffin has one in the past. So this isn't a first time, but I am happy to be here tonight, so I would like to present that to you all. We started keeping track about six years ago in our office. I'm not sure when it originally began, but we only went back that many years, and I think it was every year but one. So, but yes, you guys are in a select group, so thank you very much for letting me come this evening, and on behalf of the auditor, we thank you for doing such a great job. I look forward to seeing you next year. I'll come back with the next one. Thank you very much.
Outstanding job, Kathy, and to your crew.
Thank you very much.
Especially as she read the criteria. Wow. That's amazing.
It definitely takes everyone, and I have an outstanding staff, and I have to commend them for the work that they do. You don't get very far with people that just don't care, and they want to make sure that things are done right, and it just really, really shows.
It really does. Congratulations again.
Thank you.
And Lori, thank you so much for making the trip up here to see us this evening. We do appreciate that. Moving along, tonight, we have with us Joe Crea from Rafftelus. Some of us will remember him from about two years ago, and he's here to give us an update on the Tiffin Sewer Program. Joe?
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for letting me be here as well. We've got some slides that are going to make their way to the TV here. Do want to just, again, we're going to be providing a little bit of an update on the sewer system and specifically the rate study that we've been helping the city with. We performed a comprehensive study in 2020. We've been kind of brought back to provide a little bit of an update there. Tonight, we're not going to be presenting any specific recommendations or actions. This is sort of the beginning of a conversation that will last a few months. We'll be back after the first of the year when we have some more refined information on some of the costs related to the long-term control plan. At that time, we'll have maybe more specific requests and information. So right now, mostly this is informational and just to kind of bring everybody up to speed on where we're at. So the next slide is just kind of what we're planning to talk about today. Again, provide a little bit of background information about kind of where we've come from over the last couple of years, and then an update on the financial plan and some of the key drivers there, what our customers look like, our rate structure. That's a key component to a rate study, and then we want to look at some of the capital needs and how we plan to pay for that in the future. So the first thing is just kind of a little bit of a background on where we come from. So we were, again, engaged on the next slide you'll see in 2020 to perform a study, and the study had a few objectives. First was to evaluate the current financial health of the system, wanted to look at our existing rates and fees and charges, make sure they were appropriate, and to project rates going forward that could support capital needs and our operations. As we were working through that, the pandemic hit, which certainly threw everything kind of for a loop. But as a result of that, we were able to make some very positive changes. The first was we implemented a, recommended a 10% rate reduction in July 2020 to provide some immediate relief to all the households that were kind of experiencing that situation. And we also adjusted the annual rate increases. They had previously been 5% per year. We revised that ordinance, and it's now 4% per year, kind of that occur automatically to help support the sewer system. So that was kind of where we ended 2020, and that was sort of our recommendation for the long-term kind of financial stability of the system. Since then, you'll see that on the next slide here, a lot has changed. As everyone's experienced in their own households, inflation has driven costs quite dramatically. We've also gotten a little bit better clarity on the projects and the capital improvements that are needed to really comply with the long-term control plan. The table that you can see on the screen, it's a little small, apologize for that, but the original plan, as it was adopted in 2015, 2016, estimated that the cost of the program was going to be about $80 million. When we were here a couple years ago revising that, an inflated estimate was about $133 million for those improvements. As we look at those costs right now, we're north of $185 million based on current inflation and the true scale to meet those solutions and also take care of all the existing assets that are out there in the ground, the pipes that are kind of taking care of the sewage and getting it treated. So that's a 40% increase in just a couple of years' time, which definitely changes the outlook. And so that's why the city kind of reached out to us, and we're being proactive to make sure we can get ahead of this thing before kind of this gets too far down the road. Some of the big projects are listed there. I'm sure you've heard the names of those projects, so we don't need to go into the details. So how all this works, so, you know, the sewer enterprise fund, it's an enterprise fund, and it has to be self-sufficient. The forecast that we develop, it's driven by several major factors. The first, you know, and we just talked about, are the capital projects. The city is facing some substantial needs, and how we plan to pay for those is a big part of what the long-term forecast looks like. We have a number of customers, and we need to understand how the customer base is changing over time. Are folks moving into the city, moving out? Are they using more or less water, which is sort of the basis for how we bill for sewer? Certainly controlling our operating costs is a challenge, particularly in an inflationary environment. Chemical costs are increasing very dramatically, which is a big component of operating the sewer plant, and so we need to factor all those things into our plan. And lastly, as we, you know, look forward five, 10, 20 years, it's important that we maintain adherence to our financial policies. That means making sure we have enough cash reserves so that we can, you know, fund capital projects appropriately, that we can rainy day fund, if you will. Make sure we have enough coverage, which means we have a little excess revenue to pay for all of our debt. All of these policies really make sure that the fund is strong and stable, and we're not just thinking about things on a year-to-year basis. We really want to think about it holistically over the long term. You know, the financial plan, you know, talked about the elements there. It's really a long-term look at balancing the revenues of the system, which are primarily driven from the monthly user, you know, rates and fees that we charge our customers, and they pay, they get in their bills. We balance that with our expenses, what our day-to-day operating expenses are, paying staff, paying for chemicals, paying for supplies, and then obviously paying for the capital program. It's a big piece of that. And our financial policies, as I mentioned, is sort of the balancing mechanism. The financial plan gives us that long-term forecast that says, over a number of years, our revenues need to go from where they are today up to a higher level. And how we get there, that's through those rate adjustments or adjusting our rate structure itself. So the rates are primarily, you know, come from our customers. So what do our customers look like? We have, you know, 80% of our customers are residential customers. We've got about 20% that are commercial or non-residential, and there's about 7,700 customers on the system, to give you reference there. But what's interesting is the way that the flow is a very different kind of pie chart. It's almost half and half residential volumes versus non-residential volumes. And that's important because, you know, we charge based on both, you know, the account as well as how much flow is being put into the sewer system. And so when we think about commercial customers, they're a smaller slice, but they are kind of paying a larger portion of our annual revenues commensurate with how much they, the demand they put on the system. From a, you know, bill-to-bill perspective, we think about residential customers. This graph here might take a little bit of explanation, but what this does is shows us, you know, how many bills we're sending out at any given usage level. And this is just for our residential customers. So most of our residential customers are getting a bill around that 5 to 6 CCF per month, which stands for 100 cubic feet. 100 cubic feet is about 750 gallons, kind of an obscure number, but that's what we use. The average, when you count all the folks that use a lot of water, it's about 8 CCF for every bill. So when we think about, you know, what the rates are, we try to do some math in our heads, most of the bills that we send out, 75% for residential customers are for that 10 CCF or less. So when we see rates on the coming slides, just kind of keep that in mind, and we'll use that as a metric. On the commercial side, and this is typical, we don't see that real nice bell curve that you see for residential. Commercial customers are less homogeneous. There's just different types. You know, it could be a clothing shop downtown, or it could be, you know, a major water user that's consuming a lot of water. They all fall under that same category, which is why you see a pretty different distribution there. Our rate structure, you know, the rates right now are lower than what they were before we made that reduction during the pandemic, and that's what you see on the chart on the screen. So the left side are the rates before the reduction in July, and the right side are the current rates right now. So, you know, I think it's nice to see that we've been able to provide sustained relief and benefit to the customers over the last two years, you know, even despite all the inflationary challenges. And, you know, we have done the 4% increases since then. You can see the bi-monthly service charge that's based on the size of the connection a customer has, and then the volumetric rate is based on usage. This is a very typical and common kind of rate structure for sewer utility throughout Ohio. We work with dozens of utilities throughout the state and hundreds around the country, and this is very typical for our sewer rate structure. And, you know, nobody likes to pay their sewer bill. Unfortunately, it's a cost we all have to pay, and the bills that customers here in Tiffin pay, they are comparable to what other Ohio communities are facing, especially communities that are subject to long-term control plans, consent decrees. You can see that on this chart here, this comparison of a typical bill, this is for 8 CCF of usage, again, this is sort of our average. You're right in the middle of this comparable list of cities. There are many communities who have started to implement separate stormwater charges, some call them wet weather charges. Those are geared towards helping recover some of those consent decree-related, long-term control plan-related costs, and they often charge based on an impervious area of a property rather than how much sewage someone puts into the system. You know, at the end of the day, the money kind of has to come. It's coming from our customers, and so it's a little, just a different way of kind of collecting revenue. But you can see that the current rates, you know, they're comparable, and I can say that most of the communities we're working with are facing similar, you know, challenges that the city is. Rising capital costs, rising operating costs, and it's just a big problem that all, you know, utilities are facing throughout the industry. And speaking of kind of the challenges, this is, you know, the big one is trying to kind of eat the elephant, if you will. We've got to spend a lot of money, that $186 million, to meet the long-term control plan and take care of our system. A lot of those costs are in the next four to five years. You can see the visual there, so between 2023 and 2026, that's $130 million of capital investment. It's making the system stronger, more robust, and making sure we comply with our long-term control plan, but that's a big dollar amount. Once we get past there, things do kind of get much smoother, and we're able to kind of just take care of what we have. So it's this initial effort is really what's driving some of our focus right now. But we have options. I don't want to be the bearer of just horrible news all night. So staff, we're working really hard. I heard Matt Watson's name mentioned earlier. I know he is working very hard on this, and so we're doing a number of things. The first is working to kind of refine those cost estimates. What can we do to make that $186 million smaller? Right now, they are kind of estimates, and we do expect to get better clarity on the costs even in the next six months as we get some of our initial bids back for the design work. And that design work will help refine the actual cost estimate. So we're hoping everything gets smaller from what you see here. We are in active discussions with folks from the state about the state revolving loan fund program. They've got a lot of great options, particularly with some infusion of additional monies from the federal government related to the infrastructure bill, and they're able to offer more principal forgiveness, more deferred principal options, other programs that, you know, the city, we're going to be working as hard as we can to try to get access to that, you know, benefit to be able to kind of make it easier to get through that capital cost. And colors are a little hard to see here on the screen, I apologize. What you're seeing is just a very high-level look at the, you know, updated but current 10-year financial plans. We've updated this with a $186 million cost estimate, our best guess at what our operating costs are going to look like, and what the revenues might look like under the current 4% annual rate increase program. You can see that, you know, we look positive for the next five or six years. It's in 2029 when the chart kind of gets a little sideways, and what you're seeing is that's when the debt for that $130 million of capital work is all starting to kind of come due, and we have to make payments on those 30-year loans. So the job that we're doing, what we're doing right now, is to kind of take a closer look. How can we shrink those years, 28, 29, 30, and beyond? Again, leveraging the state programs to defer some of the cost, just to kind of smooth that out and allow our natural, you know, 4% increase enough time to get to where it needs to be to support those investments. And I could mention this, but so the other thing here of the next steps would be, the bids are coming in, we will be getting actual expenses for 2022 very soon, so we'll be making movement on all these fronts. And then our goal is to kind of continue to kind of come back to council and engage you all with updates as we get that information, and then work to kind of make sure we stay ahead of that. And that mountain always stays at least five years, you know, down the road. We don't want that getting any closer. So that is what I have prepared, open to certainly any questions or thoughts that council may have.
It just kind of scares me to death when we talk about a strong and stable financial plan when we're seeing cost increases of 40% in a two-year period. I hate to see what things are going to look like 20 years from now.
Yeah, it's a challenge for sure, and again, I think the hope is that, you know, since things, better or worse, they're all in the next four years, and 20 years down the road, things, hopefully, we'll be past it, you know? Do feel like, you know, what we're seeing right now, that $186 million, that's kind of the, hopefully, the worst case that things can be. We've accounted for as much as I think is visible to us right now. And like I said, we're hoping to shrink that from this point forward.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. The one slide you had, implement the 4% increase, we voted last year, year before, to reduce it from five to four. If we would go back to five, and I'm sure you can do that in your head or get back to the office, but that 4% was going like this, if it was 5%, it had to have reached much higher than what that graph showed, correct?
It would have been higher, yes. The trouble is, is it's still not high enough to kind of solve the problem. We did kind of take a look at that as, you know, what happens if we revert back to five right now? It doesn't get you around it, and we also kind of looked at, well, if we never kind of lowered it and we stayed on the five, it still doesn't get you around it. You know, that 40% increase is just, is just too great to kind of overcome. So, you know, right now, again, I think I forgot to mention this on the last step, you know, my recommendation would be to kind of implement the 4% next year to kind of hold the path so that we can get better information and better clarity, you know, both from what the costs are going to be and also, you know, what maybe help the state is willing to offer with some of their programs that they've got available to them right now.
Thank you, Joe, for coming up and being with us this evening.
Thank you.
And thank you for all your information and time the last few weeks, too.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Okay, continuing on, work and meetings continue as we prefer, prepare the 2023 budget. And to give the council members a heads up, I'm probably looking at three meetings in November, and I'm going to try to keep it on the 7th, 14th, and 21st. So we have two of the Monday night meetings are our regular meetings, and then we'll have a special meeting on the 14th to try to get those, all those presentations in. We're going to split them up so that we're not getting hit with all department heads every, every night, that one night, we're going to split it up over three nights. And so that's the plan, and then bring it to vote starting in December. Upcoming events before our next meeting is this Saturday is the weekly farmer's market from nine to one. The Chambers Annual Dinner is October 25th. Downtown Trick or Treat is this Thursday, the 20th, from four to 6:00 p.m., and my office will be participating. The Tiffin Developmental Center Halloween Parade is Sunday, the 23rd, at 2:00 p.m., and I will be leading it, I guess, and so that will be fun. And Heidelberg University will have Trick or Treat on Greenfield Street, October 29th, from 5:00 to 7:00. And the City of Tiffin Trick or Treat is Sunday, the 30th, from 3:00 to 5:00. So there's plenty of trick or treat opportunities out there. On a fun note, I've been asked to karaoke with the seventh grade music classes at Calvert this Friday morning. It should be especially interesting singing that early in the morning. And so I am so looking forward to this. A little nervous, but it'll be fine. So it'll be fun. So looking forward to that. So that's it for my report this evening.
Thank you, Mayor. Clerk of Council, Ann Forrest.
No report, Mr. President.
Director of Finance, Kathy Kaufman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do have the financial numbers for September of 2022. Total receipts for the month were $3,319,418. Total expenses for the month were $3,286,556.84. The general fund unencumbered balance is $5,367,215.9. Income tax receipts for September 2022 were $940,621.41. The total annual increase in income tax collections for September 2022 compared to September 2021 was $78,322.58. Year-to-date income tax receipts are up 12.64%. The 0.25% portion of income tax receipts that was transferred into Fund 215 for Public Streets for September was $115,466.42. And I'd like to draw your attention to the next page where you see month-to-date fund report for Fund 215. It says the month revenue is $101,7154. And that is because that is the difference between the $115,000 that I transferred in, and then if you remember, last month, after the month was closed, I found that we had put too much money in Fund 215, so I had to do a correction. So that's just the difference of the two. We started off the month with a negative number. The unexpendated balance for all funds is $36,755,427.1, which is the same as the bank balances for the same time period. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Kathy. Director of Law, Brent Howard.
Wanted to give you an update on the Tiffin Riverfront Development Project. I've received contact from the attorney that represents that, that project. You may recall that this is a development of a residential apartment building on, on the property where currently the Kier Speed Shop is located. This does not involve city property. You may recall the developer was looking at other improvements on city-owned property, and those, that effort stalled and stopped. And as you know, we have no current agreement with the developer for any development on those properties that we own. So the, the focus, I understand, of the developer is on the residential apartment building. During this past summer, the developer received the ABR approval that was necessary. Prior to that, received a zoning approval for the development of the project. In the last couple of weeks, I've received multiple calls and emails from the attorney representing the developer, and they are now at the stage where they would like to pursue the financing of the, the project. This is a private development. However, like as you know, there are certain economic incentives that can be received for private development in our city. And the developer is asking for the assistance of the city in the financing of the project. And these are running parallel, from what I understand, meaning that there's different pieces of the capital that they need to construct this project. There is private lending that goes into the, the project, there's equity investors that are part of the project. But then the city pieces are a couple of statutory financing processes that are open to development, and they are two items, one called PACE Financing, and the second is called TIF Financing. PACE stands for Property Assessed Clean Energy. And this was created some years ago where a property owner can, working with the city, create a special assessment on their property. So it is an assessment that the property owner will pay as a part of, in addition to their taxes. And it is a mechanism to repay a loan for energy efficiency and renewable energy parts of the project. So there has to be certain aspects of the project that qualify for energy efficiency and renewable energy. And if it does so, then that part of the project can be paid for by special assessments over a period of time. And a lender can look at this and say that this is a, a way of paying that debt service, and therefore they will then loan money to, to a developer for a project. So that's one aspect of the project, is called PACE Financing. The second part of the project that a city can be involved in is called TIF Financing, and that's Tax Increment Financing. And you may recall that there is, the city was involved with TIF financing for public improvements on the West Side. It's the same concept, but the statute allows for certain public or private development to also qualify for TIF financing, in particular when a project provides for residential housing that is needed in a community like this project. You may recall on the West Side, what happened there is that there was increased valuation to properties when properties were developed, and the taxes associated with that increased valuation were used to pay for the public improvements. So you may recall that there were certain properties that were benefited on the West Side that had increased valuation, and that, that increased valuation, the taxes for that, those were diverted and paid to the city to pay for the street and other improvements that we constructed on the West Side. In a similar way, what happens here is, is that when the developer increases the valuation of property, then the taxes on that increased valuation can go towards some of the improvement costs that they, that they incur. In both of these financing, there is really no cost to the city, but it's a way of utilizing the taxes that are, are created by the, the property improvement that are used to pay for the project. In the PACE Financing, the initial step is for a petition to be submitted to the city for, by the property owner, requesting that the legislation for PACE Financing is introduced and approved by city council. I received today a signed petition by the property owner, Shirley Kiers Valentine, and she signed the petition requesting that the city consider PACE Financing for the, for the property. I gave that petition to the clerk of council, so it's part of city council's record. The next step in this process is for council to better understand, because I know you're just getting an initial orientation through my report about the city's role in the, these, this financing for the project. What I would ask the president of council to do is to refer this matter to a committee, and I think the appropriate committee would be the Economic Development and Downtown Planning Committee. The attorney who represents the developer was not available to come this evening. He sends his apologies, but he was out of town. But he has given me several days in the next, between now and the next meeting, that he is very willing to come up and talk to the committee, and anyone in council who wants to attend that committee meeting, to hear an explanation of the project, their plans, any details that you would like to ask him about. And then also, in particular, he will walk through the, the financing that they're doing, and in particular, what they would like the city to help with, and in particular, the legislation that, that they are asking the council approve. In this particular case, they will prepare the legislation, and that's kind of the, the common approach, the developer's attorney prepares the legislation. That's not something that I will do. I have been given initial drafts of the legislation. I've started reviewing it so that I know that it meets all the statutory requirements. But it is something that they, the developer, since they want it, they're directly benefiting from the financing, they're the ones that incur the costs and the expense associated with it. So this is kind of the initial step, I'm just giving you notice that this is coming. But I would suggest that, and recommend that a committee meet and talk to the attorney. I will be at that meeting, too, and we can have, you know, a further discussion and talk about the next steps. Those are public meetings, so anybody from the community can attend. I have been given four days at the end of this month and first of November before the next council meeting, which time, though, you, you could hold these meetings. One is Wednesday, the 26th of October, Thursday, the 27th. I do have a conflict at 5:30, so if it was a meeting before then, I could work on, on that day. Monday, the 31st, or Tuesday, the 1st of November. So those are the days the attorney would like, in, in his free, in his schedule, he's coming from Columbus, to come up and, and give a, a more detailed explanation of the, the financing ask and the participation of, of the city. Are there any questions, least initially, about, about the project? Again, I'm not intimately aware of all the details of the project, but for the city's role in it, I, I've been aware every step of the way.
I, I have a question about, I have a lot of questions about the PACE, but I think I'm going to have to do my own research on that, talk to you about it. But you said something for the tax increment financing. You said it would, based on the, the increased valuation of the project, the property, whatever, they would take the taxes, let's see if I follow this, the taxes from that increase and put it into, or use it for infrastructure or, or improving street sidewalks, I assume is what we're talking about, or other infrastructure?
Yeah, it can be even part of the, the private development project, the statute allows for that. But that increased valuation, instead of having taxes that go to the political subdivisions that receive taxes, they're called payments in lieu of taxes, and they go and they pay for qualifying improvements to the property. And there are certain things that can be used to, to pay for the improvements.
So this would be stuff, improvements that the city wasn't originally responsible for anyway?
That's right.
Okay, okay, that answers my question.
That is correct. And, and on the PACE Financing, I did receive late this afternoon, a memorandum prepared by an attorney, and David Rogers, the attorney who's representing the developer, his office, an attorney prepared a memorandum that explains with footnotes and some legal detail, but it does give you an explanation of, of PACE Financing. And I will send that to you after this meeting and before your committee meeting. I'll send to all council members a packet of everything that I've received, which will include the petition that was filed by the property owner, this legal memorandum that explains, summarizes the PACE law, the legislation that would be introduced and reviewed and approved by, by city council. So I'll send a packet of all that information to you so that you can have time to review that prior to the council committee meeting, and any regular council meetings that you might entertain legislation.
At this time, I would like to-
Mr. President, I think there was a question.
I just had one more question. Now, I feel like before, when we were talking about the TIF program, when we were doing the renovations out west, on the West Side, I should say, was that a 15-year program for the TIF, or is it, how, it only lasts for so, a certain period of time?
There is, there is a certain number of years, and there's different aspects of the TIF that will make it 10 years or longer, depending on how the, what, what money is necessary to, at what percentage to, to pay for the improvements.
And then at the end of that, obviously, they would pay whatever taxes on the improvements at the end of that.
Right. After the, the TIF time period, then going forward, any taxes would be paid and allocated as any other real estate taxes to the participating political subdivisions, which would primarily be the county, the city, and the school district.
Cool. Thank you. This time, I'd like to assign the financing programs concerning PACE and TIF from the Tiffin Riverfront Development Project to the Economic Development and Downtown Planning Committee. And when we get to other business, if we can schedule a meeting.
Sure.
Anything further, Director of Law?
No, thank you.
Written communications. Oh, excuse me, excuse me. Councilman Reesner, would you please introduce a motion to accept the bank reconciliation and financial report?
Yeah, I'm, I move to accept the bank reconciliation and financial report for September 2022.
Is there a second?
Yeah, a second.
It has been moved and seconded that we accept the financial report and bank statements for the month of September 2022. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Close, same sign, motion carries. Written communication.
Mayor's request for legislation number 22-42 for the appointment of the Fair Housing Board of Donald Swartz.
Mayor's request for legis, legislation 22-42 will be referred to the Personnel and Labor Relations Committee.
Finance Director's request for legislation number F22-43 to amend the 2022 Budget Ordinance 21-105 to appropriate funds into the police department wages.
Finance Director's request for legislation 22-43 will remain on file as ordinance 22-96 has been prepared for tonight's meeting.
And Finance Director's request for legislation number F22-44 to amend the 2022 Budget Ordinance 21-105 to appropriate funds into the police, fire, and sewer maintenance departments.
Finance Director's request for legislation 22-44 will remain on file as ordinance number 22-95 has been prepared for tonight's meeting.
And that concludes the written communications.
Oral communicate- Oral communications. Anyone wishing to address council may step to the podium, sign in, and direct their questions to me. Hearing none. Motions. No motions, resolutions?
There are no resolutions this evening, Mr. President.
Ordinances.
Ordinance number 22-88, introduced by Kevin Reesner. Ordinance authorizing the city administrator to prepare and submit an application to participate in the H2 Ohio program for the development of an educational wetlands at Hedges Boyer Park to execute contracts as required and declaring an emergency.
We'll vote on the emergency for ordinance number 22-88. Motion. Councilmember Reesner.
I move to accept ordinance 22-88.
Second?
Yes.
Member Perry.
Second, Mr. President.
It's been moved and seconded that ordinance number 22-88 be passed. We'll vote on the emergency.
Councilmember Thacker.
Yes.
Wilkins.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Reesner.
Yes.
And Spar.
Yes.
Vote on the passage.
Councilmember Thacker.
Yes.
Wilkins.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Reesner.
Yes.
And Spar.
Yes.
The emergency and the ordinance passes by a vote of seven to zero.
Ordinance number 22-90, introduced by Steve Leopard. Ordinance authorizing city administrator to execute an addendum to the city's contract with Rumkev Ohio Incorporated, a related company, for curbside recycling and trash hauling for municipal facilities and residential units to extend the term of the contract through March 31, 2028 with certain rate adjustments.
That is the second reading of ordinance number 22-90.
Ordinance number 22-91, introduced by Daniel Perry. Ordinance amending section 149.032(c)(5) of Tiffin codified ordinances establishing a path based on law enforcement experience for sergeant candidates in the Tiffin Police Department.
That is the second reading of ordinance number 22-91.
Ordinance number 22-93, introduced by Kevin Reesner. Ordinance amending 2022 Budget Ordinance 21-105 to appropriate $10,000 into the Water Pollution Control Center loan fund to return the advance from the sewer revenue fund.
That is the second reading of ordinance number 22-93.
Ordinance number 22-94, introduced by Shan, I'm sorry, Shan Thacker. Ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept an easement and take all other actions necessary to acquire real property rights from Heidelberg University to construct, use, and maintain a stormwater sewer along Rebecca Street.
That is the first reading of ordinance number 22-94.
Ordinance number 22-95, introduced by Kevin Reesner. Ordinance amending 2022 Budget Ordinance 21-105 to appropriate a total of $43,000 into the police, fire, and sewer maintenance budgets for motor and oil.
Councilmember Reesner.
I move for the passage of ordinance 22-95 and suspension of city council's three-reading rule.
Is there a second? Councilman Spar. You are seconding the motion.
Yes.
Okay, sorry, I second. It's been moved and seconded that ordinance number 22-95 be suspended. Let's, we'll vote on the suspension.
Councilmember Thacker.
Yes.
Wilkins.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Reesner.
Yes.
And Spar.
Yes.
Vote on the passage of number, ordinance number 22-95.
Councilmember Thacker.
Yes.
Wilkins.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Reesner.
Yes.
And Spar.
Yes.
Ordinance number 22-95, the suspension and ordinance pass by a vote of seven to zero.
Ordinance number 22-96, introduced by Kevin Reesner. Ordinance amending 2022 Budget Ordinance 21-105 to appropriate $30,000 into the police department wages budget.
Councilman Reesner.
I move for the passage of ordinance 22-96 and the suspension of city council's three-reading rule.
Is there a second? Councilwoman Wilkins.
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded that ordinance number 22-96 be suspended and passed.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Discussion mode?
Please.
Thank you, Mr. President. For the public's benefit, $30,000 into personal services wages. Could I in the public get a clarification on that? One person, two people?
Director of Finance Kaufman.
Yeah, this is for one person, and it was not known when we were doing the budget for this year. A person ended up leaving, that person was here for many years, so then did qualify for vacation sick payout. And in that amount, that we did not have enough, we thought, to get through the end of the year without actually replacing that.
Thank you very much.
Any additional discussion? If not, we'll vote on the suspension.
Councilmember Thacker.
Yes.
Wilkins.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Reesner.
Yes.
And Spar.
Yes.
We'll vote on the passage of ordinance 22-96.
Councilmember Thacker.
Yes.
Wilkins.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Reesner.
Yes.
And Spar.
Yes.
Ordinance number 22-96, suspension and ordinance pass by a vote of seven to zero.
That concludes the ordinances, Mr. President.
Other business. Councilmember Spar.
Mr. President, I'd like to set a meeting of the Economic Development and Downtown Planning Committee meeting to discuss the Tiffin Riverfront property requests and any other business that comes before the committee. Starting with the dates available for, I don't think we should hold this meeting without the representation that's been offered, so I'd like to start right at October 26 for committee members. Leopard and Thacker.
I can't meet the 26.
Okay. Then we'll move to the 27.
Is that the date the law director?
I have a conflict starting at 5:30.
Right. Are there any other conflicts that they, is this expected to be a lengthy meeting, do you think?
I would schedule a good hour.
Okay. Is there any other conflicts?
On the 27th, I can't, I can't meet before 5 o'clock, so if we need an hour and he has a meeting at 5:30, that's not going to work for me.
Okay, so we're up to the 31st. Any Halloween plans at all? We should be all, we should be trick or treated out the day before on the 30th, yeah. How are we on Monday, the 31st?
I'm good.
Check mine as well. I think I was fine. After 5? Okay. I am okay too. So 5:30, I give you time? Is that okay with the rest of the committee?
I'm good.
Anybody else? I guess as long as we're there. So we'll set that date for October 31, 5:30 here in the council chambers.
Any other additional business before we move on to rates of pay? If not, I'd like to thank our two Boy Scouts for attending this evening. If you would like to be excused, you certainly may. We could be a while, we know that time is getting later, and we certainly thank you for your attendance.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
See you, guys.
Good night.
Okay, let's continue discussion with rates of pay for city council members. I'm trying to, there we go. I have. Thank you, Scout Masters.
You're welcome.
I have, I have no issues with the figures that Councilmember Jones have presented, with the exception of rounding up the dollar to 6, the dollars to 6,298. Councilmember Perry.
Yeah, so I was, I don't see how that really matters going from just last year to this year. It's something I think should be written into the ordinance just to, not that any of us do this for the money, but just to, you know, keep up with inflation and, you know, our time. I mean, even if you go back to 2010, if you just did a 1% increase year over year, that's $684. In the ordinance, I would probably, is it possible to just build it into 1% a year as a pay increase so you don't have to keep meeting about it? Or is that not something that you, or is it term by term?
Law Director.
It is by term. You have to do it in advance, so really you should be setting it for those next four years.
Right. And my, my number is very close to Councilman Jones anyways, it's just going to be 63, 84. That was just 1% for every year going back to 2010. Not a huge bunch, not a lot of money, but it's still, you know, I think 10 hours is grossly understated because you don't just start when the meeting starts. I mean, I have to drop my kids off and I gotta, you know, pick them up and, you know, you gotta take that into account when you're driving and going home and stuff like that and staying after meetings and discussing and, you know, not that it happens all the time, but I'm also out to eat or in the public and people are always coming up to me and saying, hey, what's going on with the city with this? I mean, not that that takes a huge amount of time, but it's, it's still something that you have to be on call for, I should say. And then when we had the whole mayor situation, obviously, that was, you know, 40, 50 hours a week, you know, with all the phone calls I was getting and on, you know, on the phone and emails and, you know, research ourselves, you know, so. But yeah, that would be, my recommendation would just be 63, 84. But I am obviously open to whatever you guys.
If I may, in my research to help council, I did pull the legislation from the City of Findlay, and they do have annual increases built in, but it's only for the term. So it is by, by their rule that there are, there are increases every year for the four years, but again, just for the life of that term.
Further discussion?
I guess I would, I would so move to even build that into the language as well, that it does increase 1% per year. Most departments, most jobs get, you know, three to four just to keep up with inflation and have to be a heck of a lot more than that this year to keep up with inflation. But that would be, that would be where I'm at with it.
So your thoughts are 6,400 a year plus 1% each additional?
Yeah.
Here.
I could suggest that, and they've, we've done that before, but you have an amount certain, you know what 1% is above that. I thought you were talking about just kind of an indefinite, letting it go, kind of like the sewer rates going up 1% every year. That's not something that you should do. But if you want to have defined during the next term what those amounts are.
Yeah, that's what I was.
Okay.
Ken?
I guess, thank you, Mr. President. Just one, a little more clarification from Councilmember Perry. Did you, that 6,400 came 1% increase from 2010 till now?
Correct.
And how can we justify going back? You're just coming up with a number.
Pretty much.
All right, okay.
And part of it is trying to stay on par with, you know, not that you use other communities to justify it, but I mean, we are one of the lower, and it is part-time, I get that, but there are a lot of, like I said, a lot of times that you put in, you know, a lot of work. And I'm speaking on behalf of someone that's not going to see this benefit, just on my experience and, you know, I think it's, it's fair. Somebody is motivated by the money, you know, I'm all for having the most qualified people be on this committee and in this, in these chambers. So I, personally, when I went for it, I didn't even know there was a pay, you know, so it is a nice perk, but it's not the reason any of us are here, I think. But it also does take our time away from other things that we could be doing. It does take money away. You know, there's certain downtown projects and grants that I'm not eligible for. So honestly, I'm, I'm on the, on the losing side of a financial part of that. I'm only here because I love Tiffin, I wanted to serve Tiffin, but I, that's just the fairest way that I see it.
I too would like to say I will not see the benefit of an increased salary as well. At least I'm 99.9% sure. Any further discussion? Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm just thinking what's fair and equitable. 2025, if the cost of living increase was 5%, only giving city council a 1% increase doesn't come close to putting food on the table or whatever it is. It just seems to me like the cost of living nationwide ought to be a determining factor.
Councilman Perry, I see you're in deep thought.
It just, I don't want to get too hung up on this, we're spending a lot of time because we are talking about, I don't want to say a small amount, but, you know, even between Councilman Jones's number and the number I proposed, we're talking about a few hundred dollars. And we're only talking about, you know, $600 over a year. So I don't, I don't want to get too hung up over this, but I do want to put it just, you know, for the next people that come in, if we do nothing, it's just going to be hard to raise that benchmark even more so the next time if we don't.
And we will not be able to have another pay raise until what year, Law Director?
Well, it always has to be, the idea is that no council member can vote a pay increase for themselves in a term, so it always has to be by at least four years in advance. Now, and this is a unique circumstance because now no one is, has a term that will be within 2024. You all have to run for it. So it's kind of a unique exception that even though it's only a year and a half away, you can establish compensation because none of you are for certain going to be here on, in 2024. But say, starting in 2024, there are council members that have a four-year term, and that means that, that you have to establish council pay for at least four years later because no one can increase their pay during their term. Does that make sense?
Does that also work on the two-year? Since they'll only, they'll have to run again in two.
Yeah, but, but part of council will have a four-year term, so they, that's why you have to go like the furthest away in, in terms of how long any member of council has to serve before the effective date of the increase in pay.
So whatever rates that we would decide on for 2024, they would, could not be changed until at least 2028?
2027.
Well, I think it's 2028 is when the term would start, elected in 2027. Right.
We'd have to pass it in 2027. Yeah.
You'd have to pass it before, but then if you wait two years, let's say, and then you try to do it there, well, those members- then you try to do it there, well, those members will still be in their term for the next four years. So if you want to look at this again for the next, starting in 2028, you need to do it prior to the end of 2026. No, it's a little confusing.
And, you know, the, the 1% increase, if we do the sixty-three, eighty-four, obviously, it's only gonna be a $63 increase in 2025. So it's not astronomical, but it is something to just keep the, the benchmark moving.
Let's round your sixty-three, eighty-four up to sixty-four-hundred.
Okay. So I would so move, we make, at least for the, the council, I don't know if we actually need a motion for this, or if you'd rather do it all in one when we kind of hash out council, Law Director and Mayor, or?
I think you should do it separate.
Separate, okay. I would so move that the council pay, and it started in 2024, would be $6,400 with an escalated, with a 1% increase year after year until the twenty, 2027.
Is there a second? Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll second that motion.
It has been moved and seconded that affective 2024, City Council members' rate of pay will be $6,400 per year with an escalation of 1% each year thereafter.
And before you finish that motion, I guess I would suggest that council must speak through an ordinance for that definitive action that you're talking about. So I think as a committee or a group coming up with consensus, I would suggest that you, the motion would be that you direct, that the ord, that the Law Director prepare an ordinance for those increases. So then that allows the public to give you input, you to hear that input, and then you actually make a decision on the ordinance, the actual official action, to decide yes or no for that. That, understand?
Yes, I'd like the Law Director to prepare legislation.
Okay. It has been moved and seconded that we direct the Law Director to prepare legislation to adjust the council members' pay beginning 2024 to $6,400 per year plus 1% escalation each year thereafter for a period of four years?
Through 2027.
Okay, through 2027. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Thacker?
The only thing I would add is, would you prefer that we bake those numbers into, so you would just specifically say 2024 would be $6,400, 2025 would be 64, 64, 2026? Would that be better than the 1% increase, or does it really matter to you?
It's objectively, we could calculate it. I guess it gets back to, do you want them to be round numbers? You know, I can prepare it however you'd like, but you could objectively find out and mathematically make the determination what that 1% is. But you may prefer to have it as a rounded up to a number.
Within the legislation, I think that would be beneficial.
I agree. Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess I'm the lone wolf here. If we're agreeing to a 1% increase, I don't care if it's 98 or 94, ends in 20 cents. 1% is 1%. It's not 1% plus a rounding factor. So it just seems clear if someone would ask me, Councilmember Jones, I hear you gave yourself a raise. I'd say, no, that's not the case. And how did you come up with it? Well, we came up with 1% and extra $2.40 to round it up to some number. So I like the cleaner 1% myself.
Councilmember Perry's good with that?
Yeah, I think we're good, I think we're good, good for a vote.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I just have one thought about that, having done payroll for a while. The council salaries are divided by the number of pay periods in a year. So a whole number is easier because everybody gets whatever it is. I'm not sure if it's 219, 23, or whatever it is. That's easier from a payroll standpoint. I'm not saying you have to do it that way, but that's just a thought that I had. Salaries are divided by the number of pay periods.
Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm willing to compromise on these numbers, rounded up or rounded down. So whatever the six of you come up with, I can sleep tonight.
Councilman Reesner?
So Kathy, what you're saying is like, maybe the first year, 6,400, the second year, 6,500?
Something like that would probably be easier from a payroll standpoint.
Okay. So that we'd probably be talking about 6,400, 6,475, or something like that?
I can tell you what the exact numbers are. So it's 6,400, 6,464, 6,528, and 64 cents. Either way, we have to round in some direction. 6593.9264, so probably 93 is my guess, but I'm not trying to be glib. I'm just saying, like, at some point, you do have to round because of just the practical nature of it.
Okay, so we're gonna say?
You're looking at 64 cents.
64, 60?
Uh, yeah, 64, 64, 6,528, 64 is the next one.
Six, 65 what?
6,528 and 64 cents.
6,530?
And 6593.93 if you're rounding.
Works. How do those numbers sound? 6,400, 6,460, 6,530, and 6,590?
Glad we stayed round.
Any further discussion on that? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, let's, yes.
Do we have a second on that?
Yeah, we had a second with.
I believe I did.
Okay, thank you very much.
Let's discuss the Law Director's salary. I'm sorry, I didn't bring my notes with me on this one. I really wasn't planning on talking about this. Go ahead, Councilman Perry.
So Law Director, as I've stated before, I feel like is very, very underpaid for the services that they provide and, you know, qualifications that they bring to our chambers. Just some quick math, based on, you know, just 20 hours per week, he'd be at $53 an hour, not he, whoever the person would be. Based on 30 hours a week, they'd be at $35 an hour. That'd be, and then there are weeks, I know the Law Director has put in 40 hours plus, and they'd be at $26 an hour during those weeks. The current average in Ohio, just doing a quick Google search, 111, $111 was on the low side of hourly to, up, up to 571, which, those are some pretty nice lawyers there. But I, I just feel like, I, I know, you know, again, this won't benefit our Director of Law sadly, but I, in my head, I feel like this needs to be at, at least 10,000 more in the 65, at, at least range, maybe higher, but that's just the, the number that, that kind of stuck out to me. I'm obviously open to whatever you, the council decides here.
I don't have my figures with me. Dan, what's the current?
Fifty, 55,000 roughly is, is it right at 55 right now?
All four years during this last term, including next year, is 55,000.
And the Secretary budget of 7,000, right?
7,500.
Okay.
Now, is that included in the 55, or that's above?
It's a separate.
It's additional, okay.
Yeah, to pay for, and a 1099 is issued to, a check of gross amount is issued to the, the Law Director, and then the Law Director's expected to use that for whatever secretarial or administrative assistant services.
And even with that, over the last few years, you know, obviously, with inflation and all that, that should probably be up in the, I would think, the 10 grand range to get somebody, you know, to retain people and to keep qualified people in that position. So that would be my suggestion is, is 65 and 10, but obviously, I'm very open to, to that.
Councilman Reesner?
Is this one gonna stay static like it is now, or is it gonna be stepped up like we did for ourselves?
It's up for discussion.
Certainly is.
I'm thinking, I was thinking 15,000 increase for Law Director. I think Brent is probably lowballing the hours that he works for the city every week. And you can be sure, when we have a new Law Director, whenever that time comes, Brent's got 25 years of, how many years' experience? 25, 28?
27-plus.
28 years of experience. He can whip through these things much faster than someone with no experience, I'm sure. Dan?
And, you know, I know we've mentioned this in the, in a previous meeting as well, but I know some other cities have had certain legislation built in where their Law Directors paid based on their experience. Obviously, somebody that brings the experience that our Law Director brings is probably more valuable than somebody that's fresh out of law school, I mean, and, and doesn't know the ropes as much. So that's something else I think we can consider looking at this as well.
I like that as well, the way it was broken out and years of service. Councilwoman Thacker?
I don't want to be the naysayer, but technically, that's not up to us. We don't, we don't hire this person. They're an elected official. And so the only thing that we get to add to who is the Law Director is our own individual votes, or if you decide to, I don't know, sponsor that person in some capacity or, you know, speak on their behalf. But whoever we have coming in is gonna be entirely brand-new to this job. We can't really count on an uncontested election, you know, like, I guess that's what I'm trying to say.
If I, if I could, I think Cheyenne's on the right track, is that this is an elected position. This is not an appointed position that you are hiring an employee where you might have a, like you do, you have a first-year rate, second-year rate, third-year rate. I think you need to, like all elected officials, you establish a, a salary that you think is, is proper and let people run for the political office, public office, and through the political process, and that's the way it should be. And you're gonna get people of varying experience. When I started out, I had, I, I did represent several villages, and you might have village solicitors that are interested in run. You know, that's great experience. It's similar to what I do here. So I think you need to just establish a rate of compensation and not have any sort of first-year rate or depending on experience because they're running for the same office, whoever it is. Cheyenne is correct.
Councilwoman Thacker?
I am agreeable to the, the 70,000 with 10,000 extra budget for administrative assistant. I'm in agreement with that.
Your thought is 70,000? Councilmember Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. I like Councilmember Perry's $10,000 increase from 55 to 65. And I can explain that to anyone who asks me, and again, talk about cost of living. Councilmember Perry's suggestion and mine are only $138 off. Just to say, 15,000 increase, where'd that come from? Well, two council members came up with 15,000. I'm just not comfortable with throwing 15,000 out.
Councilwoman Thacker?
What about 10,000? I mean, where did that come from? It's also just a number that somebody else?
Comes from the middle of page one, or the middle of page two, using my cost of living.
Is that where you got your 10,000 from, or was that just a separate?
It just, honestly, it was, it was a bump, but it wasn't too much in my mind. I mean, I just, I don't want to make it, I don't want, I don't want to go crazy with it, obviously, you know, that you have to have, you know, where, where you don't want to add, you know, double the salary or something like that. But I, I don't want to make it too much either. So I, yeah, it just, it was a number that felt right, I guess.
Councilwoman Thacker?
Just to explain kind of where I'm coming from, with a little bit of background, I know that there are certain attorneys in town that charge, and I'm not saying that's what we're going for here, but for their legal expertise, they charge 200, $250 an hour for, for their knowledge, for their research, for the time that they're putting into it. And so I think 15,000 isn't, it's not that much of an increase when you divide it up over the amount of hours that we're looking at. And to me, a very good Law Director, the amount of time, if you give them an incentive to be here to want to do it, they're gonna save you a lot more money in the long run in comparison to maybe some of these other positions. The amount of expertise they, they help us with is, to me, it's, it's beyond money, right? I don't know.
Law Director?
Just for more information, you know, the, the Law Director is, by ordinance, able to get insurance, health insurance through the city's plan. So that is an added benefit, even though it's a part-time position in some respects. Years ago, before I became Law Director, it was established that health insurance was a benefit that the Law Director receives. So, you know, that, that is a, a, a nice and sizable benefit. So as you're thinking about the overall compensation package that a Law Director would receive.
Councilman Perry?
Just, again, going back to the numbers, if we did the 70,000, you know, based on the hours our current Law Director puts in, looking about $44 an hour, and that was based on 30 hours per week. I know sometimes he said that it would be 20 hours, some, some weeks did demand 40. So, you know, probably somewhere in that 20 to 30 is, is fair. And for anyone that knows how expensive school is for anyone to get their law degree, I mean, I think, still doesn't scratch the surface, but it makes it more fair, I guess.
Any motions? Councilman Perry?
I would so move that we, starting in 2024, we ask the Law Director to prepare legislation for a future Law Director to earn a salary of $70,000 per year on top, in addition to a $10,000 allowance for Secretary.
Councilwoman Thacker?
I'll second that motion.
Clarification, Law Director. Do we need to put the 10,000 in for the Secretary in this ordinance, or does that come under our budget?
It, it is a part of the compensation ordinance. It has been historically in the past.
For the law director?
For the law director, right. So it'd be just a separate line item, but it's all within the same ordinance, separate from the budget.
Okay. Okay, it has been moved, did we have a second on that? You had, you moved the motion.
I moved, I moved, I motioned, yeah.
And you had the second. You had your hand up.
Are we in discussion mode on?
No. It has been moved and seconded that we direct the law director to prepare legislation to raise the amount of compensation for the position of law director to seventy thousand dollars a year, plus an additional ten thousand a year for secretary. Any discussion? Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. I still like the sixty-five thousand dollar number rounded up. Whoever runs for election, when they go down and take out a application, whatever you want to call it, they know going in it's sixty-five thousand if they don't want the job. Okay, don't go door to door, don't. So I'm comfortable with sixty-five thousand, I'm not comfortable with seventy.
Any further discussion? Councilman Perry?
One thing to note, I know, obviously, over that four-year term, who knows what inflation is gonna do during that term, and they're not gonna receive a raise during those four years either, so, so, yeah, I'm comfortable going forward with the seventy, myself.
I'd like to say I, myself, very comfortable with the seventy. I've, I said earlier, and I'll say it again, I think our law director is underestimating the hours that he works. And, you know, to have an attorney give you good advice all of the time, we're gonna have to pay the price. I mean, we're looking at what, how many dollars per hour based on, based on twenty-five or thirty hours a week versus a law director that may make a hundred and eleven dollars per hour in another city? Councilman Sparr?
I'd like to just point out real quick, I checked, starting at sixty-five thousand dollars, adding one percent a year, because we use that figure, brings us to, after four years, in that fourth year, a salary of sixty-seven thousand, six hundred and thirty-nine dollars and twenty-six cents, twenty-sevens, well, twenty-six cents, which is a little over halfway to the seventy thousand dollar mark as the salary. So setting the salary at sixty-five thousand for four years without an annual increase of that one percent, I feel like we're closer to the seventy thousand to begin with, so we're actually looking at, instead of paying, we're looking four years down the road, we're looking at, at that salary being closer to what, what we're talking about here at the end of that term, when it could possibly be discussed again. So I'm in favor of the seventy, because that covers that increase, at least by half. And maybe that helps putting a number to it like that.
Not really.
Understandable.
Any further discussion? Councilman Jones?
Can't we start at sixty-five hundred? Amend the motion.
Sixty-five thousand.
Sir?
Sixty-five thousand.
What did I say?
Sixty-five hundred.
One more zero.
Oh, one more zero, okay. And add a one percent increase per year for the next three years, and that would bring it up to sixty-seven thousand, six, 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 whatever number Councilmember Thacker came up with, that's splitting the difference. I can compromise-
This is a point of order.
Sir, okay.
This is discussion of a motion that's already on the floor, so that motion would have to be voted on first, I believe, is that correct?
Yeah, I think so, but I guess you're throwing that out for, to see if there's any support for it before you would try to amend the motion, correct?
Correct.
Vote. Okay, we have a motion on the table and a second to authorize the law director to prepare legislation for the rate of pay for the law director to be seventy thousand dollars plus an additional ten thousand dollars for a secretary. Any further discussion? Councilwoman-
Amend the word secretary to administrative support or something, please.
Administrative assistant?
Thank you.
Okay. We will change secretary to administrative assistant. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye? Oppose, same sign?
Aye.
Motion carries six to one. Now, we'll discuss the position of mayor. The mayor currently is at seventy-five, one sixty-three?
Seventy thousand thirty.
Pardon?
Seventy thousand thirty.
Oh.
Seventy-three, thirty, seventy-three.
Seventy-three, yeah. Was it seventy-three thousand?
Thirty.
Seventy-three thousand and thirty dollars.
Mister Three, yep.
I for-
Oh, go ahead.
I for one think that number should be raised, and I'm gonna go with the same fifteen thousand. Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. If you look on page one on top of my handout, seventy-three oh thirty, four years later using some cost of living, and the numbers I came up with would end up at eighty-six one twenty-five. I guess I'm comfortable with eighty-six one twenty-five. There's some logic to where that number came from, not just fifteen thousand. Somebody else could say, just make it thirty thousand, let's make it fifty thousand. I'm not comfortable with throwing out-
You're not comfortable with eighty-eight, but you're comfortable with eighty-six?
Difference here. Where's eighty-eight?
I came up with seventy-three and fifteen, making eighty-eight.
Eighty-six and eighty-eight, I'd be comfortable with eighty-seven.
Councilwoman Thacker?
Between your two numbers, I just want to put this out there, we're talking about a difference of one thousand nine hundred and five dollars a year. And so, in a month, and, you know, not even including taxes, we're talking about a hundred and fifty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents a month that we're bickering over.
Bickering, I'm not, I'm sorry.
No, not bickering, you know, I'm, I'm-
I'm lying.
A nicer, a nicer word than bickering, disagreeing, discussing.
What are the benefits that the mayor receives as far as insurance or any other benefits go? Can you help us out with that, city administrator or law director?
Any city employee receives the OPERS payment, payment into OPERS, their health and benefits, vision, dental, medical. What am I missing, Kathy?
Medicare, workers' comp, any of those.
Medicare and workers' comp.
But no, no vacation, longevity, law director doesn't get that either, you know, that's, it doesn't participate in those type of employee benefits.
Benefits normally run roughly, what, twenty-four percent of the salary?
You mean, I don't get a vacation? I didn't know that in the beginning.
You can take time off, but there is no accumulation of vacation.
Oh, okay.
You may not get reelected.
That's true.
You know, I don't like that thought process. We're, you know, we could essentially hold the mayor hostage forty hours a week in Tiffin with no vacation.
I don't, well, let me, let me further explain, is that there are no set hours that an elected official like the mayor is required. So, you know, we've been very fortunate in that we have mayors that are extremely dedicated and, and as John, I think was interesting comment, you sign up to do the job, so there's expectations and you do it, whatever it takes. And we've had people that have done that, and, but there is no requirement, so you're not gonna be able to hold them hostage and force them to work a forty-hour work. We force them to work sixty-plus hours, right? For giving them a job, and that's what their expectations are.
Better place to be than Tiffin, though.
Definitely, second that, having served with Mayor Muntz and Mariana Toono, I actually have to encourage them to ratchet back their hours so they don't burn themselves out. It is a very demanding job, and they both have represented the city very well and have never taken advantage of anyone. They work extremely hard. Sixty hours a week is probably an understatement. And you talk about going out to dinner and having someone approach you as a councilman, she can't go out anywhere without being approached by someone with, we're glad you're the mayor, and oh, by the way, could you look into this for us?
That's a constant.
And, you know, another thing, we, I had this conversation similar to that with city administrators several weeks ago, and I don't expect my mayor to go to every function there is, to be a judge at a domino tournament or something like that, I mean-
Sing karaoke.
Yeah, or sing.
I'm trying to get candy to go.
I don't know if I want to hear a singer, you know, I-
Hey, I can or must every, at least I did.
You know, I just, I just don't expect our mayor to be so ceremonial that he has to attend every function that he's invited to.
Or she.
Or she, I'm sorry.
Well, as Nick and I have discussed, I get this guilt complex, you know, because who, how do you pick and choose who's worthy of me going there or not, you know? So I feel like, and I've told Nick since day one, if I'm available, sign me up. And so I am attending anything I'm asked to do, because I do feel bad if, you know, how do I justify not going to some events? And so if I'm asked, I do go. And I've enjoyed every one of them, so it's not like it's been a problem going to them, other than when I got popped in the eye by the Perineas Festival Queen. I was assaulted. You know, other than that, it's, I really, you know, people keep asking me about the job, and I keep telling them I'm having way too much fun. I really am enjoying it, and I work with really great people every day, so how can you not like it?
You're fortunate to have such a, such a great staff top to bottom.
I really am, and I know that. And Nick and Dale are always trying to kick me out. Well, you go home, but I feel guilty if I, if I leave.
They also suffer all the spears and arrows of dissatisfied individuals, which is very wearing over time. And I don't know how you attach price to doing that. Most people are very positive, but there's always that percentage of negative individuals who want to attack the mayor personally, and it's unfortunate because it really is wearing over time.
I don't check in on Facebook as much as I used to. Especially just keep an eye on my grandkids and stuff.
Councilmember Perry?
Lot of keyboard warriors out there. Yeah, I mean, even before, you know, when it was just the newspaper, somebody had to write a letter to the editor to attack any of us, now it's just to touch on a few buttons on their phones. So honestly, with the birth of social media, like I've said before, you know, you open yourself up to a lot of people, be able to, more avenues for people to contact the mayor, not that you have to have social media, but, you know, Mayor Muntz started it back in the day, being so darn accessible.
Well, but Nick, you know, to give credit to, Nick does almost all of it, you know, the social media, and he does a tremendous job with that, and very diplomatic and very on point with everything, and he just does a really nice job with that.
You make a good point, Councilman Perry, they should have voice for their disgruntlement if they're disgruntled, that's why we're here, we want to hear that. And so I'm not trying to say that that should not exist because it is good conversation, but your other point is, you used to have to sit down and think about what you were going to say and reduce it to writing. Now you just click a few keys and it's out there already, and you can't take it back, it's, it's out there, and it spurs others to jump on the way.
Right. It's everything into me not to respond sometimes. So, yeah, I would agree, somewhere in that range. I mean, I was, for this particular one, I was more in the, you know, ten percent, but I am certainly open to, to discussion on that as well. And again, ten percent kind of just went back to how much inflation we've seen over the last few years, and I don't see that number slowing down, and this is a full-time job. I'll be a hundred percent honest, I thought this number was higher than it was. I was, I, yeah, I think there's definitely a raise that needs to take place here.
As we keep saying, it does not affect me, does not affect my wages now.
Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. Maybe I have thin skin, but I don't want to vote on an ordinance or not vote on an ordinance of eighty, seventy-three, eighty-eight thousand per year, because one or two council members, when we, say, year and a half ago, we, someone just threw out fifteen thousand and it stuck. Why wasn't it twenty? Why wasn't it thirty? I don't know, whoever spoke up just started at fifteen. Go back to cost of living, I can justify eighty-six one twenty-five, and that wouldn't bother me. Just to throw out fifteen, twenty, thirty thousand, doesn't seem like a logical way to come up with a salary.
Eighty-six is thirteen thousand higher than the current.
Okay.
Councilwoman Wilkins?
I just want to say to Ken, I appreciate you putting this together with the numbers and following with the eight point two percent. I agree with you, I like that, numbers, cost of living, very easy to answer the question to meet to some of the other council members that, whatever you said, thousand dollar difference, X amount a month, it's for all the other things, right? So we're, we're including the cost of living, the eight point two percent, that's why we've gotten to the eighty-six, but then when you add in the social media, the meeting somebody in the restaurant, those types of things, that's why you round it up a little bit, for all those other things that aren't considered when you're just looking at the numbers. So that's why I agree with the eighty-eight number for all other things included, right? So you're looking at the hard numbers, yeah, we gave them the cost of living raise, and then all other things included, all the other additional things that you have to deal with as the mayor, if you're looking for an explanation when someone asks you for that.
Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, thank you, Councilwoman.
Wilkins?
Wilkins, thank you, miss. That explanation makes sense, eighty-six one twenty-five. I don't know what other big words you used, or whatever it was, but I guess I can go along with that for explanation if it comes, and whatever this social media is, I guess I don't get into it, but I guess words don't hurt.
I guess to, to add on to that, like, I appreciate you putting these numbers together, because for me, arbitrary numbers, just throwing things out there are, make nervous to me. So then when I'm listening to other things, when we are talking about the law director, when you break it down per hour, okay, that number makes sense to me now. I see why you included the cost of living, but then with more conversation, that's how we get to the different numbers. So I guess when we're, we're talking to people and people are asking us these questions, I think we've used everything that you've given us, and then we added a little bit more because of this, this, and this, and the conversations that we had, and so don't think that your work that you put in wasn't taken into consideration at all. I think this actually really helped guide the conversation and then those of- And then those of us or other people included some other things that they've kind of seen from different perspectives as well. So thank you.
Councilwoman Thacker.
The only thing I would add, because I'm, I'm in support of paying people what they deserve and, and what we think is what we hope people to aspire to be. But the only thing I'll add is that we, when we're looking at these numbers, we assume that we as a body agree 100% with the body that was here that decided the rates to begin with and whether those were fair. And I think we should pay people what they're worth and what we hope they'll do. So I'm, I'm still on the 88. I think it, it's a good value. I think that the 86 is a good value, too. I think they're both fine, but maybe I'm a little more optimistic in what I hope from people.
Any further discussion? Councilwoman Thacker.
I'd like to make a motion to have the law director draft legislation to increase the mayor's salary to $88,000 a year.
Is there a second? Councilman Sparr.
I second that motion.
It has been moved and seconded that we direct the law director to prepare legislation to increase the rate of compensation for the position of mayor to $88,000. Is there any further discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye? Oppose, same sign? Motion carries seven to zero. Is there anything further to come before city council tonight? Councilman Perry.
Go Guardians.
What's the score?
My delay, who knows the score?
It's a rain delay.
It's a rain delay.
I just checked.
Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. A side issue, what time is karaoke on Friday? Ms. Kaufman and I could critique it and give you our opinion on how you do.
Well, Nick's already coming.
Are you singing?
Live, live stream. It'll be live streamed.
So how many innings have we completed, Annie?
It's delayed.
It's delayed.
Oh. It hasn't started yet.
Works out perfect.
Works out perfect.
Most copies will be up till 3:00 AM.
Oh, golly.
City Council, the musical.
Talked about that.
When you, when you see it on the calendar, where am I going to go calendar? It doesn't look as bad.